Call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call for Snyder.
Osborne.
Here.
Euler.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Kushner.
Here. Approval of the minutes from April ten, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, Osborne.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kushner.
Yeah. Adoption of tonight's agenda.
Mayor Kushner, we are going to pull item number thirteen from the agenda this evening.
Okay. I was gonna say, there's my vote. Move to, or move to approve the adopted agenda. Maybe. Move to.
Okay. Osborne.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kushner.
Yes. Number five, first and second reading of an ordinance. This is a first and second reading of an ordinance enlarging an R three low-density multifamily residence district by rezoning land located at one fifteen and one seventeen West Oak Street from general business to district to R three, the low-density multifamily residence district. Ms. Carroll.
Mayor and City Council, you held a public hearing at your meeting two weeks ago on this item and continued it over until this evening. Since that meeting, staff has met with two of the people that were here at that meeting and had some follow-up questions I've outlined and summarized that communication in your staff report. Be happy to answer any questions you have this evening. I will remind you that at the staff had recommended approval for the reasons in the staff report from last time. Those are included in your packet. As well, Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their meeting at the beginning of the month, and they did not vote to recommend approval of it, so they recommended denial of it. And with that, it would take a concurring vote of four to approve this item this evening. If you wish to approve the rezoning, it would take four affirmative votes to do that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
May.
Yeah.
It would take four votes. The ordinance is written in the affirmative, so it, yes would be to approve.
Yes is to approve.
No would be to.
No would be to deny, and it would need four yeses to pass.
Okay.
Motion, please.
Motion. This must be a motion to move the second reading by title.
Thank you. Motion to move second reading by title.
Thank you, Mr. Ready?
Thank you, ma'am.
Osborne.
Yes, or no, yes. Am I voting yes?
You're just voting for the reading by title.
Oh, then yes, for that. Thank you.
Euler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kushner.
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance enlarging an R three low-density multifamily residence district by rezoning land located at one fifteen and one seventeen West Oak Street from general business, general business district to R three low-density multifamily residence district. This is being read for adoption or rejection. Osborne.
No.
Euler.
No.
Jones.
No.
Kushner.
No.
Okay, motion failed, four to zero.
Okay, number six, other business, resolution approving or memorandum of understanding between the R six, Warrensburg R six school district and the city of Warrensburg Chief James.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The resolution for you this evening is for MOU at the school district. As part of a nationwide settlement with pharmaceutical companies and relating to opioid problems that the country's experienced over the past several years, the city received a small settlement, a small portion of that settlement to be used for very specific programs. One of those programs that we've identified is kind of our flagship pilot of using some of that funding is partnering, partnering with the school district to provide naloxone, or more commonly known as Narcan, in the schools. Not that it's a widespread problem, but in our schools as it is, but since it is out there on the streets, we felt equipping them with those, that medicine to be able to intervene quickly was important. So we'll be working closely with their health services department to implement that program. They would do the management of it and just report back to us. We just essentially just be providing that medicine. So I did go to the school board last week for approval, and they did approve it. So that's just up to you on the resolution tonight to move forward that MOU and that program. Having questions, be happy to answer.
Sounds like you'd use for the funding. Motion, please.
Move to prove, to approve that resolution.
Osborne.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kushner.
Yes. Oh, number six point two, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri authorizing destruction of records held for the required period on the Missouri adopted retention schedule. Ms. Snyder.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. We've considered several of these destruction log request, resolution requests recently. Many departments have been monitoring and auditing their records. In this case, it's the police department records that have been held according to the Missouri adopted records retention schedule, and they are ready for adoption, I mean destruction, and they are listed in detail on the destruction log. There's any questions I can answer for you? Appreciate a motion.
Motion.
To do so.
Motion to approve.
Osborne.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kushner.
Yes. I have one mayoral appointment, Catherine Norton, to the Planning and Zoning Commission member for four-year term through April thirty of two thousand and twenty-seven. Motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Osborne.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kushner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Number seven is appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. We will begin this section with a statement from our attorney.
How about that? There we go. Good evening. For the public comment, please remain respectful with all. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or other shows of agreement or disagreement with a particular speaker or point made. We want to ensure that all who have signed up will have an opportunity to speak, so please be respectful both with the responses and to the speakers and with the time of speaking. Each speaker who has signed up will have an allotted time of up to, but no more than three minutes regardless of the speaker or their statements. City manager Danielle Doolin, who's getting the list, will keep track of the time for each speaker that has appropriately signed up prior to the meeting to speak. The public comment portion is a chance for citizens of Warrensburg to directly address their concerns or comments to the council. However, we should note it is not a Q and A session or a town hall meeting. Council will not be addressing questions tonight. They will listen to comments and take it under advisement for their purposes of making decisions or action items. With that said, I will turn it over.
Okay. First thing, is there anybody that signed up for any of the previous agenda items? Mr. Angel, do you still want to speak on that?
No, nothing.
Okay, we're going to strike Mr. Angel's sign up. Was there anybody else on any of the previous agenda items? Okay. When you're called up, please state your full legal name and your street address of where you live. First one is Mr. Raymond James.
Raymond Lee James, five five two Southeast EE Highway. I'm a Johnson County resident, but I'm the one that invited the folks to come to our community and have a pride event. I tried to get one started in two thousand and twenty, didn't work out. Two thousand and twenty-one, we had our first one. I thought it went very well. We also had one last year, and evidently some folks now are real happy about having that event. Not sure what to say. I was thinking Carrie might be here, but I guess I don't see her right now. I know she used to live right, right close here. But I thought when we got rid of the nineteenth and adopted the twenty-first, that we might have been a little closer to understanding that we should let people have their freedoms and do things, and if we don't like it, don't go. That would be the point of this pride deal, is that if you don't want to go, you don't have to go. If other people want to go to do a legal activity in a enclosed environment, they should be able to do that. Now, I've heard about those other people in Columbia, those fearful people from a big city, but again, they were invited to come to our community. Many speakers here today will tell you that they want to have that activity occur. The other thing I guess I was hearing is that there was abuse last year. I'm a father, a grandfather. I served twenty-one years in the Army. I was a required reporter for child abuse for more than twenty years in Missouri. Used to inspect daycares and, and home care providers. If I saw abuse, I would have reported or stopped it. There was no abuse. If you look on social media, you'll see some pictures. That's not anything filmed in Johnson County. I don't recognize any of those performers. They didn't come to our county and perform. I don't know where that was filmed at, but that didn't happen here, nor would we allow that type of performance. So let's be a little clear, you know, when you're. Thank you. Anyway, I guess I don't see Carrie, but I think her spirit is here. If you want to know Carrie's last name, it's Nation. She is the one with the Tommy Hawk.
Kind of used.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Rachel Gifford. As a reminder, your name and your street address, please.
I have a quote for you guys. Can I approach it? Give it to you. You can give it to me. Thanks. Okay, my name is Rachel Gifford, five five oh Northwest seventy-one Road. In the book, you're probably not gonna be able to see it, but anyway, Danielle knows. Open the book. And on the first page, what you see is advertisement for the Berg Pride Fest. And the thing that caught me on the invitation was there are seven and a half hours specifically allotted for children and/or their parents or their supervisor. And there's one and a half hour allotted for adults. So that gives a message to me. It's like, why is there this inordinate desire for these people to be in front of kids? So that was my first thought. Then if you go, basically, the next thing I have in there is the city ordinance, section thirteen dash one, and it says what is prohibited within Warrensburg. And all history says, no person shall perform, cause, keep, maintain, or do any nuisance or contribute to the same as defined by the laws of this state, the provisions of this particular municipal code or other ordinances of the city. And it goes on to say, you can't do it now, you can't do it later, you can't have done it. So then you go under the enumerations of them, and you go down to number ten. And it says, any article or thing whatsoever that may injure, inconvenience, endanger, harm, or even annoy the health, welfare, morals, or safety of the inhabitants of the city of Warrensburg. So to me, that definition includes a drag queen show for children. Drag queen shows for adults, no problem. I don't care one bit. But drag queen shows for someone under eighteen years of age while they are still in a very moldable and not able to really differentiate what's going on when a man dressed as a woman with snap-on body parts covered by spandex comes at them. Maybe their parents can, can help them understand that, maybe not. I don't know the answer to that. But anyway, actually, just so that you know, that particular ordinance was actually updated on April one of twenty-one. And that was signed in by Brian Jacobs. So it's been, it's not only been around, it's also still around and has been updated. What?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, thank you. Missouri also has a law. I'll let you look at that because Danielle has the book. And then these are the pictures that I'll just quickly flip through. If you think drag queen shows are really not that big of a deal. Okay.
I see your comments. Next up, Michelle Amos.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Amos. I live at three oh seven South Warren Street, Warrensburg, Missouri, six four oh nine three. Um, I saw that this event was happening, well, not the council meeting, but people speaking at the council meeting, and I am a researcher. I have a few bits of experience with five oh one C threes and five oh one C fours. Um, and in those activities, I've learned a little bit about how those are supposed to function. So I was super curious about the organization that brought the petition up, or will be bringing the petition up. I'm not sure if it's up here yet. Um, I looked on our Secretary of State site and found that this organization, We the People of Missouri, is registered as a five oh one C four, which says they are nonpartisan and educational. And by educational, oh, pardon me, and their purposes for the well-being of the United States fiscal, budgetary, domestic, defense, and foreign policy. I don't think drag queens are any of those. Um, it also said that in order to be considered educational, it must present a sufficiently full and fair exposition of pertinent facts to permit a formation of an independent opinion or conclusion. Now, I do believe that there will be items raised on both sides of this concern tonight. I do not believe that they will be brought by the same people. Um, finally, I, I did notice on the website that there was a key for donations, but in looking at the SEC records, I could not find an EIN for the organization. It may exist. I just could not find it, and I know that's something super important if they are receiving donations. The next thing I wanted to look into was law stuff. So I went to Missouri Law Review because I had heard the word nuisance, and I know that, like, so many words. It has a different legal definition than it does the definition that I use when my cat's being one. Um, and I found information about private nuisances and public nuisances, and a private nuisance affects user, the, the use or enjoyment of property. In order to contest or to have standing for a private nuisance claim, you have to own the property adjacent to it. And in looking up information about this organization, the address for the organization is not adjacent to the site for this to happen. So I looked at public nuisance because that sounded a little bit more of applicable, I guess. However, um, I couldn't understand how a public nuisance could be a private event within a private business, but I looked it up anyway. And in order to qualify, thank you, as a public nuisance, it has to be injurious to health, welfare, morals of society. Usually, it's gangs, drugs, and prostitution. And finally, uh, standing for that is the Attorney General. You're gonna tell me the same thing. Or a local prosecutor, not a concerned group of people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, number four is a Michael Compton.
I come before you tonight.
Sir, your name and address.
Sorry, Michael Compton, five, two, southeast two hundred and thirtieth, Warrensburg, Missouri.
Sorry.
Five southeast two.
Okay, I come before you tonight as one of many citizens standing up to protect our children from exposure to inappropriate performances that are commonplace at drag shows. In the past few years, our nation has seen shows such as the one scheduled for June third become increasingly common. They are portrayed as being a way to teach children tolerance. As I've researched these events, I've found that is not the intent. And what I've learned has been shocking. As I searched and found photos and videos from other events promoted as all ages and family-friendly, I quickly realized that just because group calls an event family-friendly doesn't make it so. I emailed all of you, except for you, Jan, you didn't have it on there. I hope they.
They did.
My long of videos that I found and urged you to do your own research. At, it also came to my intention this weekend that the same group that is putting on this year's event put on one last year, and on their Facebook page, they posted photos from last year's event, and what I saw was shocking. The images show performances that one would expect to see at a strip club. Now, there was no nudity that I saw in the photos, but there were even photos of grade-school-age children holding up dollar bills to give to men dressed in stripper-style costumes. And there's, in the picture, people are cheering us on. Is this the type of event that we want Warrensburg children to participate in? The same types of performances conducted in front of children with actual women as performances, I suspect, would be subject to arrest for child endangerment or abuse. Indeed, no one would condone children being present, present for such performances. City ordinances governing adult businesses make that clear. Why then wouldn't we hold men to the same standard? That said, we're not asking you to cancel the event. We're only asking that no one under the age of eighteen be allowed to attend. No one's rights are being violated. No group is being shunned. The only group at risk is our children in this community. When you asked the people to elect you to your office, you assumed a responsibility to this community. Nothing is more important than protecting our children. That should and must be your highest priority. If you, as our elected leaders, will not act to protect our children, I assure you, the residents of Warrensburg will not forget the next time you ask for our trust. In just one week, we have collected over four hundred and fifty petitions, and I will leave you with comments. Thank you for your time.
Sir. Anthony Clav, Clavenger.
Yep.
Anthony Clavenger, five hundred East Market Street, Warrensburg, Missouri.
All right. Mayor Kersher, board. Like many of my neighbors and friends, I'm very concerned about what children see and learn. Uh, for instance, um, there's an organization here tonight, and I think it's awful that kids learn hate and fascism and things like that. So what I'm gonna do about it is I'm not gonna take my kids. And what I'm not gonna do about it is I'm not gonna come to this, this, this government and ask you to infringe on their First Amendment rights. I don't think that, that when, you know, you're doing something in a, in a, in a private area, our LGBTQ community are not nuisances. They're not. So, you know, if you don't like pride, don't go. And the last thing I have to say is, you know, don't be the, don't be the council that signs on to fascism.
Great night.
Thanks, sir. Next up, Chris Barrett.
Chris Barrett, three twenty-one France Maro, Missouri, six four zero five zero. I am the director for Gays Against Skirmishers. I'm responsible for all of our chapters around the world and also here in Missouri. There is an all-ages drag show going on in your community. So why would a gay man such as myself be so against something like this? Well, first and foremost, it's about protecting kids. Drag shows, while entertaining for adults, are not appropriate for our children. They usually involve very sexual behavior that is not appropriate for minors, and even when a drag show is supposed to be intended to be okay for kids, there are far too many examples on social media that show that that usually does not end up being the case. There's another reason that I and my organization care about this. It's because it's a horrible representation of the gay community. We take no issue with representing the gay community to children and giving them positive gay role models. But why has society suddenly decided that drag queens need to be the face of the gay community? It's just wrong. We are doctors, lawyers, police officers, and members of the military. Those are the gay role models we should be presenting to kids. It would be much better for them to know us as normal members of our communities than men who dress up and perform as women. So what's the solution here? Well, you guys need to pass an ordinance that prevents this from ever happening in your community again. I would argue you'd be doing the gay community, gay people such as myself, a huge favor, and you'd also be protecting kids. That sounds like a win-win to me. I understand it may not be possible to pass an ordinance preventing all ages drag shows before June third, when the drag show is supposed to happen, but it does need to happen so we can prevent this in the future. I also understand that this is going to take a lot of courage on your part. You will face backlash. You'll get death threats. Well, welcome to my life. As a public figure with an international platform, I get death threats and backlash every day of my life. But as public figures, this happens. We have to remain courageous. We have to do our jobs. And I truly believe your job is to put a stop to an all-ages drag show in the city of Warrensburg. So I respectfully ask you to please do your job. Thank you.
Sir. I'm gonna do my best on this name. Dorothy Arm.
Dorothy.
Pardon me?
Dorothy Armazoo.
Thank you. I try to do better with them, but.
Thirty-seven Southeast two fifty Road in Berg. I attended last year's event. There was no abuse anywhere. There were a lot of adults there. There were a lot of kids there. It was publicized. No one was caught off guard. And it was a voluntary event. People could choose to attend or not attend. I have a problem with the characterization of performers as being evil or predatory or whatever they want to call it. There is no evidence of that. There is no evidence of that. And that is not a way that we address human beings. Out of such language come things like mass shootings. And we don't need to do that. This is a group within our community. It is not the entire community. There are other groups in the community that hold different views on how to raise their children. I do not tell them how to raise their children and I respectfully ask that they not tell me how to raise mine. I will choose the events that they go to. I will choose the books that they read. And I expect that others will grant me the same. This is not a necessary petition. It was on private property. It was closed. The children did not get there by nefarious means. They did not magically transport there. Their parents brought them there. And their parents have the right to emphasize the values that they consider important. You may not like that, not you generally. People may not like that. But it is still their right to raise their children according to their values. Just as it is your right to raise your children according to your values. So I would suggest that we understand that this is one group within a much larger community of other groups and that they do not speak for all of us. And they do not speak for me. Thank you.
Next, uh, Chris Norgrall.
Norball. It's okay. No one gets it. Oh, I see. It's more like a R. Sorry. No worries. Uh, Chris Norball, 1900 6th Street Court, Naukastor. Um, I'm gonna probably keep mine pretty short. I, I've been to drag shows before. I've won one last year. Been to Pride festivals. Um, never saw any sort of child abuse going on. Um, I respect their rights to come and protest that if they want. That's their choice. But that's why we're here. Um, rather what I saw going on there and what my family saw going on there was messages of empowerment and joy. And, uh, just, it's so important. I mean, I hope they are protecting all kids that they would protect my kids too and their right to see themselves represented in this community. Um, this is a tick, as many people have said, this is a ticketed event, so it's not open to the public. So if I choose to bring my kid to it, then that's my choice. They choose not to bring their kid, then that's their choice. But they don't get the right to take away my choice. Uh, parents can choose to allow their children to attend it. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sir. David Kreiner?
Hi, I'm David Kreiner, 503 Swallow Street here in Warrensburg. I just wanted to say I have attended one of these drag shows in Warrensburg, uh, with several of my family. I'm thirty-three-year resident of Warrensburg. I'm married. We have five children together, four who are adults. The drag show was quite enjoyable. I did not see anything objectionable from my point of view. I did not see any potential for harm to anybody. There were some people who were wearing nice clothing. There were some people wearing makeup. They lip synced. Some of them did quite a good job. Some of them did okay. We all enjoyed it. The, the additional point that I just wanted to bring up is I, I believe it's in the economic interest of Warrensburg to support a diversity of events to which, uh, people with different interests feel welcome to attend. And to the extent that we don't do that, I think it contributes to an image problem that can only hurt the city economically. So I support Warrensburg, uh, being open to holding a variety of events for people with a variety of preferences and interests. Thank you.
Ms. Vicki Gibson?
Vicki Gibson, 99 Southwest 101 Road, Warrensburg. Good afternoon. Um, as I said, my name is Vicki Gibson and I've lived here in Warrensburg for eleven years, I think now. I'm the mother of children who are now grown, five of them, and I have six grandchildren. I have never been as disappointed in our elected officials in this country as I am standing here today. I remember years ago, it was a common, it was very common to hear the phrase, it takes a village to raise a child. And there was a time that we knew as a country that we were working as a united team. The parents are extended families, our church family, and of course, our governments supporting the traditional family and the ideas attached. Sadly, our villages are broken. Families are divided. Our schools are busy trying to be politically correct. And all the while trying to convince our youth that America's moral ground has shifted. The saddest, most pathetic part of all of this is that our churches have forgotten their own role and not just the family, but in our nation. Then there's the smaller governments such as city boards, school boards, that continually change the rules despite all the logic and the moral facts that would negate their divisive changes of actions. So I find myself in front of one of those smaller governments. And let's face it, you all need a gentle reminder every now and then that you do represent we the people. And many of these people are too young and they have a voice that is just not heard. So we have to be their voice. I do attend church and I am fully aware that of raising a child after the way it should go. And even though my kids are grown, I can tell you this, my job has not ended. The majority who didn't get out and vote, who are represented here through myself and, and people in this room today, do not want this mislabeled immoral cabaret event in our county. Honestly, we don't want it anywhere. We can clearly see this is the national consensus. All you have to do is look at the bills that are currently waiting for amending and votes. House Bill 494, clearly being one of them. And Tennessee just passed anti-drag queen legislation. Ohio did as well. Here we are relying on you to make a clear, sound, moral, ethical assessment and judgment based on the following facts. All the while remembering you are the voice of we the people and that includes our children. And do, I don't know if any of you know the definition of pedophilia, but I'm gonna share it with you as per the dictionary. Pedophilia is a psychiatric disorder in which an adult or older adolescent experiences a primary or exclusive sexual attraction to prepubescent children. For those who don't know what that means, that means that they are before the age of sexual reproductive maturity. In other words, girls too young to have a period and boys too young to get a girl pregnant. So they are attracted to these, these age groups. Now, knowing this, um, what part of a performance begins with the goal of a man dressing as a woman, putting on makeup and strapping on body parts and dancing provocatively. And by the way, y'all have a picture of.
You need to step down.
Please make sure that we say to our man, I'm Paul.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Upon the expiration of time, if the speaker does keep going, you can, of course, ask them to cease. If they don't, you can ask for their removal if necessary.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Renee Vance?
Renee Vance, 19813 Tangen, Sedalia, Missouri. I am a silver haired representative for Pettis County, retired Air Force. And I've been to both of the previous Pride events. As a silver haired representative, I'm a required reporter as well. And there was never any occurrence in which I felt a need to call social services. What I did see was love and inclusion, which is sorely lacking in today's society. Ones what I think we're supposed to be trying and do better for our children and by showing the good in everyone. So the pride is just that. They can do and be free to be themselves. Something that we always are supposed to be. True to yourself. Being true to your religion, true to your beliefs. And I believe our constitution is equality for all. I was very proud to speak at that function and I would be proud to do it any day. I, it is very important that the freedom to make a decision for a job or a business should be able to do what they want. It's a paid event.
Thank you. Uh, Andrew, Ike?
Ike. Andrew, Ike, 202 Southeast 51st Road, Warrensburg, Missouri.
Just one second before Mr. Ike. Just a reminder to folks, the three minutes is for everybody. It's about getting everybody in and through. If we do have folks going over, the mayor can't ask for removal from the meeting of that individual. Just please be respectful of everybody's time and ability to get up and comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a lot of hats I can speak on tonight. I want to use one in particular. My name is Andrew Ike. I am a crisis counselor for the nine eight, nine, not eight, the eight suicide and crisis hotline. Because it was a vote, I want to provide one, a definition for a term grooming that was not used tonight, but pedophilia was. According to the American Bar Association, grooming is a method used by offenders that involves building with trust with child and the adults around a child in an effort to gain access to and time alone with him or her. In extreme cases, offenders may use threats and physical force to sexually assault or abuse a child. More common though are solo approaches designed to build relationships with families. Some important facts for you all to consider on sexual assault. This is from the Department of Justice. This study is from 2000 and it's kind of disturbing that the DOJ's research and statistics are from 2000, but from the research I've done, they have not changed much in the last 23 years. Ninety-three percent of child sexual assault offenders know their victim. Of offenders known to the victim, thirty-four percent were members within their own family. Fifty-nine percent were acquaintances, teachers, members within their community, family, friends, members of their congregations or youth organizations, et cetera. Seven percent were complete strangers to those children. To specify some of that data, this is from a similar DOJ study, uh, or the same DOJ study, I should say, between the ages of zero and five. Sexual assault from a stranger accounted for 3.1% of victims. Meanwhile, offenders who were a member of that person's family for that age group, nearly 50% at 48.6%. For individuals aged six to 11, the prominent sexual assault offender is an acquaintance of 52.9%. Strangers compromise 4.7% of those individuals. For individuals ages 12 to 17, 66% are acquaintances, while only 9.8% are strangers. The number for strangers does not radically jump until the individual becomes over the age of 18, when they are 18 to 24 approximately, where stranger sexual assault compromises 23.7%. And then 30.1% assault by strangers after the age of 25. The trend here being noticed that as a child develops, more likely they are sexually assaulted by members of their family when they are in an age before entering public education and more likely to be assaulted by a stranger when they become an adult. So important also stats to keep in mind on the topic for tonight. Compared to heterosexual youth, LGBTQ plus youth are 3.8 times more likely. Was that time? I'm sorry. If the council would like these, I can stay behind and you can get my information from me.
Sir. Ms. Becky Kraus.
Becky Kraus, 250 Southeast 301, Warrensburg, Missouri, 64093. I come to you tonight as a white woman speaking from the Christian faith. And my concern goes back to pledging allegiance a little earlier tonight and the freedoms that we enjoy to congregate with those we want to. My faith tradition came in 1720 to Pennsylvania, persecuted in Germany. If you baptized an adult, you were killed. And so they came here seeking religious freedom. Freedom we still enjoy today. To choose what church we want to attend, what community event we want to be part of. And I believe tonight we are here for a much larger issue. And that is the freedoms we enjoy, which are being threatened by persons who want to pinpoint one group. And I want to share, um, the importance of that in a quote by Martin Niemöller, a Lutheran pastor who spoke after Nazi Germany. And he said, first they came for the socialists and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists and I didn't speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me and there was no one left to speak for me. I think we need to take those words to heart tonight as we speak up for those who are on the margins of our society. I believe Jesus did that as he gave me that example. I want us to love others and to lift up those on the margins in our community and to celebrate the gift of God's creation in each human being. Thank you.
Elsa Lee.
I wrote my preferred name on the paper rather than my legal name. My legal name is Annabelle Brits Monroe. Please refer to me as Ezra Monroe. I would just like to say that, what exactly are we challenging here? Kids like me, people who encourage them to be who they are? I don't understand why a per, a woman, or pardon, a man in a dress is a problem if they want to wear a dress. I don't understand. I, my rights are being threatened at the state level and yet we're humoring about this. It's a pointless argument. Even then, it's on private property. No one's forced to come. No one has to come. You can come if you want to. A quote I like to remember, if your religion says you can eat beef, that's fine. But if your religion says I can't eat beef, that's a problem. You don't want to tell me what I can and cannot do just because you, your religion or your beliefs say it. I have my own beliefs. I'm a person. I think that's what we're down to here. An issue of people and we're forgetting that we are people. Thank you.
And is the end of the signed up, uh, individuals? So at this time, uh, people can stay if they'd like to. We still have meeting to get to or you can, whichever you prefer. Okay, number eight, Miss Lays Matters for the mayor and/or city council. Wait just a few minutes for them to go.
Yes, I've had.
Perfect.
We're just gonna wait for a little bit.
Yes. She's helping to start the arcade, and she's starting a film club. Pleased to meet you, Eddie Osborne.
Thank you.
Very welcome. I just, um, messaged, uh, the arcade.
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's gonna be Jay.
Yeah, yeah, just have Jay get in touch with you. You're welcome.
I can't get figured out how to open this to show you the link. Oh, it sure is a no reply. Okay, I should be able to find it. On our civic bus, contact the city. And I asked on Sunday, okay, I've not. Yes, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we, there should be a John Davis CD who played a, who recorded Blind Boon's material.
I've got the CD.
John Davis?
Yeah.
We've also got the Blind Boon.
Okay, I was waiting for Danielle. She'll be right back. Chief, are you all good? As soon as Ms. Doolan gets back, we'll continue with the meeting. Okay, well, we'll resume with, uh, number eight miscellaneous matters for the mayor and city council, members of the council.
Nothing.
Okay. Number eight miscellaneous, oh, number nine, city managers report and staff.
City department directors have anything they would like to share?
So coming in the near future, we're looking at it, but I'd like to recognize Julie Alakine. I care a lot where the, uh, she is our first female that is mayor of Warrensburg SWAT team, joint SWAT team. It is very, uh, very extensive, uh, physical agility test plus firearms testing. And, uh, she performed very well and outperformed some of the current SWAT members. So just want you to aware of that.
Raised that bar, didn't she?
Do what?
Raised that bar, didn't she?
And who was that? I'm sorry.
Just one, Julie Alakine.
Okay.
And she's on military leave right now as well. And she's been kind of in and out, but I give her credit. She's come back working for us as much as possible, as short as we are, just to help us keep our staff, you know, three, three officers at a time. So she's not only working on base, but she's come back as much as she can. She just tested and I wanted to advise her one of that tonight. Tested, I think, a week and a half ago, she made the SWAT team. The last SWAT member, you know, on the joint Johnson County-Warnsburg SWAT team was over twenty years ago. And that was, uh, oh, Yvonne Metter, Yvonne Metter. So that's pretty impressive.
Yep, very good.
That was the only female officer that we've ever had on SWAT, but I'm aware of. Thank you.
Very good.
Uh, just something in the management report I gave you, our trench rescue class that we had a couple of weeks ago, went off great, but it was another event made possible with Public Works' help. I, I always compliment they, and the entire group for years, what they're able, they have a lot of really cool tools and a lot of, uh, guests to come help us out and they're always there when we need them. So, excuse me, just another, uh, public thank you, Public Works for making that happen.
I also today saw something online where Terry, I believe Terry, the inspector, utility inspector? Somebody was praising how he was helping with some of the issues with the fiber.
They're, yeah, they're still rolling through town. You know, I will say, I do think that the restoration is getting better, but undoubtedly nature of the works, there are going to be some utility hits.
Okay, you're still on?
I'm still on. Uh, just wrapping up, uh, this evening's closed session was going to be by evaluation, but we will move by six-month evaluation and to catch Councilmember Jan Jones up on what I've been working on the last six months and what council has directed me to work on. But we will do that at the second meeting in May if everyone is available.
I will be.
And, uh, we are this Thursday and Friday, uh, management team, so all of your department directors, we will actually be taking two days, um, to go to a management, uh, team retreat. We're not really going anywhere and I don't really know if it's going to be a, a retreat. We are going to be spending two days with each other in a room, really talking about some of those very high-level strategic conversation, conversations and discussions and items that as a department directors will be focusing on as we head into budget season, priorities that we have, vision that we have for the community and how we run the organization. And then, you know, how we do those things that you all have directed us to do. So we're going to be taking some time to get out of that day-to-day, take a thirty thousand foot view and spend some time together. So that's where we will be on Thursday and Friday. I'm, I'm not sure if management teams have done this in the past, but this is definitely the first time since I've been here as city Warrensburg in twenty twenty that, uh, management team's been able to do that. So we're, we're really, I'm really looking forward to it. I hope the other directors are also really looking forward to it.
Okay, um, since you brought up budget. Marcelo's favorite subject. Right next to honest. You know when we're gonna start on that? About?
So we will start the second meeting in May. Um, I know we have June twenty-sixth wanted to have Courtney Christiansen come back and talk about the compensation study that we've been working on. So she's going to come back at a meeting in June. We will really start, I, I want to have a conversation with you all, a facilitated conversation about our strategic plan as we're heading into, really hot and heavy into those conversations. So, um, we'll be taking some time, probably that first, that second meeting in May, to really talk about where you all want us headed.
Okay. Barb, did you have something before?
I was just gonna remind people that our home improvement class is coming up. And, um, move away from that screen, so. May second, from six to eight, you know, we do ask that you register in advance for the dis-.
Okay. All right, Marcelo show?
Um, well, before you, this evening is, is my report. It includes a highlight of budget to revenue expenditures and, yeah, revenue to budget to expenditures. To give you an idea of how much money is left in each of those funds. Recall the first part of the year because we collect all the property taxes and et cetera, that generally we are seeing revenues exceeding expenditures, but as Public Works gets involved and numerous contracts that they've got going on, we will start to see those numbers kind of compress. Recall that budget was adopted with use of, um, reserve funds. So it's very possible as we continue throughout the year that you'll see those numbers go in reverse where you actually have more money going out than you have coming in because we purposely planned that with the capital expenditures that we had approved in budget. Um, so this is snapshot in time. It gives you an idea of what we've got going on right at the moment in that respect. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chris, did you have anything?
Looking forward to, uh, the city council coming to Park Board, Pro-John, maybe next Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Oh, yeah, this Wednesday. I guess there is our next one. We'll see you in a couple of days.
Okay. All right, Chris, thank you. All right, anything else with Doolan?
That is all we have for you this evening.
All right, we, as number eleven, we shall adjourn. Thank you, everyone.